Good evening. I'm Leah Dembitzer, President of the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale. I'd like to welcome all of you to our Candidate Forum for School Board Trustee. We are pleased that all four candidates for trustee are participating tonight. The League is happy to offer this forum as an opportunity for the Scarsdale Schools community to hear directly from the candidates who seek to serve in this extraordinarily important local elected office of School Board Trustee. The League of Women Voters of Scarsdale is a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization which promotes political responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens and government. The League is nonpartisan in that it does not support or oppose any candidate for public office. It is political in that it takes positions on selected governmental issues after serious member study and consensus. This evening's program will begin with candidate opening statements. Following that, the first two questions will be posed to all four candidates. Questions three through 10 will then be posed to two candidates at a time. And the final two questions will be posed to all candidates. Candidates will then give their closing statements. All questions will be posed to the candidates by the moderator. I would like to recognize the members of the League Subcommittee who organized this event: Beatrice Sevchik, Alyssa Baum, Alyssa Ruback, Diane Baylor, and Suzie Hahn. I will be the timekeeper this evening. Excuse me. Time limits will be conscientiously enforced by our moderator, and the timekeeper will be visible on the screen so that all candidates can see when they have 30 seconds remaining and when they must conclude their response. The school board's school budget vote will take place on Tuesday, May 18, at Scarsdale Congregational Church, 1 Heathcode Road. Polls will be open to voters from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Absentee ballot applications are now available. Applications may be submitted in person, by mail, or via email to the district clerk, Honore Adams. All voters can still apply to vote by absentee ballot using the temporary illness clause if there is a risk of contracting a disease such as COVID-19. You are already eligible to vote if you are registered with the Westchester County Board of Elections to vote in the general elections, or if you are registered to vote in the Scarsdale Public School District and have voted in a school election within the last four years. For information on how to register to vote in this election, you may visit the school district website or the League's voter information page on LWVS.org. Tuesday, May 18 is the last day for the district clerk to receive completed absentee ballots by mail or in person by 5:00 p.m. by appointment only. I welcome our moderator, Ms. Sheila Miller Burnson. Ms. Burnson is a past co-president of the Newcastle League of Women Voters. She's a current board member of the Newcastle League and also a current board member of the New York State League of Women Voters. She's an experienced League moderator, and we're very pleased to have her with us this evening. And with that, I will turn the program over to Ms. Burnson. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Good evening to everyone. I hope... Good evening to everyone viewing from their homes. First of all, I hope that you and your families are well. After more than a year of producing Zoom candidate forums, we are getting pretty good at this. However, there are glitches from time to time, so please bear with us if we have any technical issues. This is my favorite and the League's favorite kind of election: a contested one. I am pleased to serve as moderator for the Scarsdale School Board Candidate Forum. I do not live in your district, so I am unfamiliar with the candidates as well as your issues. I want to go over a few details about this evening's proceedings. The names of the candidates for School Board Trustee in alphabetical order are Jim Dugan, Iron Israel, Jessica Resnick-Ault, and Allison Tepper-Singer. There are two open school board seats for a three-year term and four candidates. The two highest vote-getters will win the seats. This forum is being recorded and available on the LWV Scarsdale's website for future viewing. Prior to tonight, the speaker order of the opening statements was chosen by lots as follows: Jessica Resnick-Ault, Jim Dugan, Iron Israel, and Allison Tepper-Singer. The closing statements will be in reverse order. Opening statements will be a maximum of one and a half minutes. The Q&amp;A portion of the forum will follow. The questions were formulated in advance by the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale and by questions submitted in writing by the public that were vetted for relevancy by the Office of the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale. The candidates did not see the questions before the forum. The candidates will have one and a half minutes max to respond to every question. Oops. Hold on a second. Following the Q&amp;A portion of tonight's forum, all candidates will give closing statements, again, a maximum of one and a half minutes, and it'll be in the reverse order of the opening statements. The timekeeper for this evening is Leah Dembitzer. She will hold up a sign indicating when 30 seconds remain and then a stop sign when the time is up. Candidates may finish the sentences they have started, but I will enforce time limits as well as rule any answer that is of a personal or hostile nature as out of order. We will now begin with the opening statements. Good luck to all candidates. Hold on a second. Ms. Resnick-Ault, please.
Thank you. The hallways of Edgewood were abuzz with excitement in 2019 as kids put on their tour guide badges and proudly guided their alumni through the halls to celebrate the school's centennial. It was a pride that all Scarsdale students can share. They were taking pride in robust music and art programs, new STEM opportunities, innovative student leadership, ethnic and cognitive diversity rarely seen in such a small district. When the challenge of the pandemic came a year later, many stakeholders felt heard and represented, but others lost trust in the board and in the administration. Still others had worries that predated the virus over special education or capital spending. I want to serve on the Board of Education because I care about the future of Scarsdale Schools over this decade and all the ones to come. My training as a journalist, a union manager, a unionized employee, a parent, and a volunteer make me the right person to increase community involvement and transparency, to make sure our budget spending aligns with our priorities and advances the mission of educating every Scarsdale student. I see this community's potential, even in a pandemic, coming together on my lawn each week, first graders to seniors united in volunteerism. We must include every student in this unity and bring back all Scarsdale students so that they have the same pride Edgewood kids and alumni felt at its centennial.
Thank you, Ms. Resnick-Ault. Now, Mr. Dugan will give his opening statement.
Thanks, everyone, for attending this evening. I'm Jim Dugan. A little bit about myself: I'm a lawyer, advocate, and counselor for 26 years and a community volunteer in Scarsdale. My wife Shirley Salmer and I moved here 15 years ago for the excellence of these public schools. I have three children, all girls, ages 10, 12, and 14. They all attend the public schools here in Scarsdale. Next year, I'll have kids in all three of the public schools: elementary, middle, and high school. I've been involved in the schools here since 2011, starting the Coalition for Scarsdale Schools to advocate for smaller classroom sizes in the elementary schools with success. I've been a volunteer at the Citizens Nominee Committee, president of the Overhill Association in Fox Meadow, a vestry member, and warden of the St. James Church on Crane Road. In all of these roles and as a professional, I've learned a number of things that I think I can bring to the board to help the experience and to help bring excellence to the Scarsdale Schools, which are already an excellent, excellent school system. What I think I've honed are the following: listening skills, advocacy skills, judgment, the ability to build consensus among different groups, the ability to try to find the best solutions that can exist for our children and for our community when there is dissension and disagreement. I don't come with an agenda. I come with an open mind and willing to listen to facts, arguments, and debate, willing to foster facts, arguments, and debate with the community among ourselves and on the board. I think all of that is healthy, and if I am lucky enough to be elected, I hope to bring all my skills to bear for the betterment of our children, our schools, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Now, Mr. Israel will give his opening statement.
My name is Iron Israel. This past fall, I witnessed firsthand the educational, social, and emotional struggles of my and many of your children, coupled with a lack of transparency from our school administration and a reluctance of our board to ask questions, get answers, and communicate with the community. I strongly believe that we need a complete change of board culture. Community input: I will personally present your questions and be held accountable to you. I will foster greater community input and involvement. The current board voted to curtail public comments in the face of parents waiting to speak. They rejected a community volunteer medical advisory committee and instead voted to eliminate senior medical positions in the midst of a pandemic. Transparency and oversight: the board refused to address the administration's lack of transparency, the main concern of the parent survey this past fall. Misstatements by the administration continue to be ignored by the board. There were opportunities to increase safe in-person and synchronous learning this year for vulnerable children, but the board did not hold the administration accountable to following their policy and abdicated its role of administration oversight. I have the skills, experience, and guts to address these concerns. This is not an agenda, nor am I a one-trick pony. Board culture affects every decision, from textbook choices to diversity to the next unexpected issue around the corner. It exacerbated the problems of this past year and caused division in our community. I am the only candidate who attempted to address these concerns this year, and if elected, I will continue to do so as I address every issue that comes before me. I will investigate every problem looking for solutions, not obstacles. Our current culture of exclusion needs to be changed to one of openness, contribution, and participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Israel. Now, Ms. Singer will give her opening statement.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, to my fellow candidates, and to everyone watching at home tonight for participating in tonight's forum. I'm Allison Singer, and I currently serve as Vice President of the Board of Education. I have lived in Scarsdale for 21 years, and both of my daughters went through the Scarsdale Schools. My youngest daughter graduated in 2017 and will graduate from Yale next month. My older daughter has profound autism, and her experience led me to take a very active role in the special needs community, both here in Scarsdale and throughout the nation. Experiencing our schools from these two very different vantage points has given me a unique and valuable perspective around how our schools serve the talents and needs of all students. Scarsdale is about personalized learning. It's about creating programs that serve every single child. I want all students in Scarsdale to have access to a superior education that will enable them to become active and engaged citizens, as I believe both my daughters have. The skills and experience I've gained as School Board Vice President, as a member of several other policymaking boards, and as a community volunteer made me particularly well-suited to board work. There is a steep learning curve to understanding the legal, financial, and regulatory requirements that boards must operate within. In short, experience matters. While any given year has its challenges, our collective past pales in comparison to this year, and I look forward to discussing the key issues facing our district.
Thank you, Ms. Singer. Now, we're going to move on to question and answer period. The next two questions are going to be asked of all four candidates, and this is the question: we're going to begin with Mr. Dugan. What are the three most pressing issues facing our district in the next three years, and how would you specifically address them? Mr. Dugan, you have one and a half minutes.
Okay, so I think the most pressing issue facing us right now is recovery from the COVID pandemic. How are we doing on that score? How are we approaching the input from the community? Where I think there have been real issues in the last year in terms of reaching out, getting the input, listening to the input. There's a lot of unhappiness in our community for how the district and the current board seem to not listen to the needs and concerns of the community. Mr. Israel pointed out there was a proposal to have a medical advisory committee that was not really well-received. There's been a lot of, in my opinion, sort of a insularity in terms of how the board has approached this very serious, serious pandemic. And I think parents feel left out, and I think they feel that they haven't been listened to, and I think they feel like they haven't had their concerns addressed, and I think all of that is a shame. So when I say the response to the recovery from the pandemic is important, what I also mean is gaining the parents' and the community's trust is important. That, to me, is the second biggest thing that can be done. I don't know if people realize how much trust was lost in the last year or so here in Scarsdale, and it's very shocking and sad to me. When I came here, we were, without question, one of the best school districts in the state, if not the nation, if not globally. We had people moving here for the schools, and that was the primary reason. Now, we have people leaving because they're unhappy with the schools. That has to stop. We have to turn that around. That can destroy our community. I will fight as hard as I can to ensure that doesn't happen.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Mr. Israel?
Of course, I'm going to mention COVID as well. Not everything is about COVID, but it was the big event of the last year, and there's still a lot of unanswered questions: will there be remote classes, remote teachers? What are we going to do about the barriers? Will it be up in September? Masks? There's a lot of things still in play and a lot of questions to be answered. We need to follow the science and the data and not the politics, as was followed sometimes this year. We need to assess the effects, not just educationally, but socially and emotionally of our children. Mental health will be a big issue this next year. Although it's been said by the board that everything was done for our vulnerable children, I didn't see it the same way. There were IEPs and 504s who did not have enough in-person schooling time or enough support. Our youngest learners were struggling to learn and socialize on Zoom, even though the administration had a document that proved that all elementary schoolchildren could fit with all safety regulations at six feet. This was a missed golden opportunity that not all districts had to help our most vulnerable. Another big issue: the DEI initiative is being talked about a lot. I agree with people that it's a great step forward, but there are no specific plans or metrics. And it's hard to tell what the plan really means, what will it really do? There's a committee mentioned who will be on the committee, and what kind of power will they have? These are important things that are not outlined in that plan. And lastly, as I mentioned earlier, board culture, which affects everything, really needs to be worked on: how we approach everything, every decision, communication, transparency, and oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Israel. Ms. Singer?
I think the first, most important issue would be student and faculty mental health and wellness. We have to support our students as they reacclimate to school and as they reengage with the world. Our students faced tremendous mental health challenges during the pandemic. They experienced social isolation, loneliness, Zoom fatigue, technology overload. We asked them to utilize new systems. We gave them all manner of new expectations. Their world really turned upside down, and they experienced real effects. So the budget that the board has just passed includes resources for proactive mental health outreach. I agree with Iron that that is the most pressing issue. The second most pressing issue is we have to focus on the potential positive impacts from COVID, things that we learned that we didn't expect but that we want to move forward with that benefited students. So one example is small group learning. What we learned by cohorting students into smaller groups is that our teachers, our parents, our students all talked about the benefits of learning in those small groups. We also, when we started live streaming sports, because parents weren't able to attend contests, we realized that that was a great opportunity for our journalism students, and we also learned lots of new ways to employ technology. And then the third key issue is for us to refocus on the critical board work that was necessarily backburnered during the COVID pandemic. We have to focus on the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative, curriculum assessment, safety, giving special education, security, long-term facilities planning, preparing for...
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Singer. Ms. Resnick-Ault?
Unmute.
Sorry for that technical glitch. So the first thing, I'm in line with everyone, that the focus needs to be overturned, but I think it's more than that. I think what we need to do is a postmortem, and as a reporter, I have the skills to do that. I have spent the past two decades covering major disasters and crises, and I'm ready to ask all the questions about everything we did incorrectly that we can learn from, as well as the things we did right: the small group learning, the Friends of Music and the Arts Practice Partners Program, which was exceptional, and how we can take some of those programs: Talent Hood, which was a student-led initiative, the Inclusion Clubs work to advocate for underrepresented students, how we can take those disparate initiatives and learn positively from them, as we also learn from our missteps. Because this isn't going to be the only crisis that our district faces. So that's our first thing: we need to do a postmortem. The second is we need to look at diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is a key issue facing everyone, and it is probably the key issue facing Scarsdale from a curricular and other standpoint going forward. Finally, we need to prove that we have a board, an administration, and a school that is healthy, that is unified, that district is on the same page, and is willing to draw inputs from everyone.
Thank you very much. Now, we are moving to the second group of questions. These... The next, I'm sorry. The next question is for all four candidates. Please give an example from your work or volunteer experience that illustrates how you have handled a pointed disagreement with an individual or a group you have represented or served. We're going to begin with Mr. Israel.
Okay, so I helped plan and manage the Great Jack-o'-lantern Blaze for Historic Hudson Valley. They had brought me in specifically for that event when I first started working with them, but they decided afterwards they wanted to keep me around and help plan other events and work on other events. They decided to move me to the Horseman's Hollow, which is a work-through haunt event. They wanted to put me on this event specifically because there was a challenging director that they had issues with, but they wanted on another year. And there were 60 diverse actors and a large crew, and they felt that I was really good with all people, and they wanted me to work with them. So when I came in, the director, the relationship with the director and the management, it was toxic. Every meeting was like a divorce proceeding, arguing over every little thing. But I got to work with him personally and separately and talk to him, and I began to realize his heart was in the right place. He knew his job, and he was going to create a great show, which he did. I learned that the issues were, he liked focus, and ironically, for a director, he needed direction on what to do and when to do it, more just to be pointed in the right directions. So I insisted on, instead of the Friday meetings, we move them to Thursday. We have planned meetings where we talk about everything's going on the weekend, where all the actors are going to be. I guided him during onset to being in the right place at the right time so he wouldn't miss anything and people wouldn't be angry that he wasn't there. And we ended up having a great working relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Israel. Ms. Singer?
So my example is going to be drawn from when I served as Chair of Scarsdale Child. You know, back then, and this is going to seem absurd now, back then, the kids in the special classes had to change elementary schools every two years. So if you're in a special class, you would start in Fox Meadow for kindergarten and first grade, you would go to Edgewood for second and third grade, and then you would go to Green Acres for fourth and fifth grade. We were asking our most vulnerable students to give up the comfort of their known environment and change, move to a new school. The same in the middle school. The way special education and the parallel classes were organized, kids had to leave their houses in order to access the parallel curriculum. We were determined that we had to change that to protect our most vulnerable students. We wanted to, we worked with the administration, with building principals, through a committee with other parents and other stakeholders to change that so that each year, a special class would start in one elementary school, and that elementary school would commit to keep all of the students until fifth grade. The same with the middle school. We devised a plan where each year, one house would take our special education students, and they would be able to stay in that house. There were many parents who opposed this, and there was very vitriolic public comment at the board meeting, some of which was delivered by me, some of which was delivered by people who opposed these changes. But eventually, we all worked through it. We went through a very big lift of asking some parents to have their children change houses in the middle school, which we know is tough, but eventually, we worked through it, and we erected consensus, and that plan is now in place to the benefit of all of our special...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Singer. Ms. Resnick-Ault, please.
So I think that one of the reasons that the SBNC gave me and Jim the nod this year was our experience in handling various kinds of negotiations and crises. And one negotiation that I have handled very recently is union negotiations at Reuters. I've been active on the union side, and it's a little bit of an odd position for me to be in because previously I was a unionized manager. So it's a conflict. We're working out this contract, and I've gotten to see it from both sides, and I'm probably the only person who has that bird's eye view. And this contract that we're working on is very unusual because if it is approved, it will be the first in the media industry to include specific diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. And we're still wrangling on what those numbers are going to be and what they're going to look like. But I believe that this experience, going through the process, bringing my knowledge of both sides to partnership committee meetings, discussing all of the issues with staff who've left, with staff who've come in, and working through the roadblocks that we've seen to building a more diverse newsroom could really translate very directly to diversity and inclusion efforts in the Scarsdale Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Resnick-Ault. Mr. Dugan, please.
So my example will come from the time, from service I've done for St. James de Lais Church in Scarsdale on Crane Road. I was on the rector search committee on the church, and I don't want to get into confidential discussions, obviously, or name people or, you know, sort of reposition arguments now after the fact, but I will say that I advocated very early on for something that was extraordinary in the history of our church. We nominated and appointed ultimately the first female rector of our church in its 160-year history, and that was not a decision without controversy, and it was not a decision that was not unopposed by some members of the search committee. It was, you know, something that had never been done before in our church. But I felt, and others felt, that it was the right time to go in that direction, that we should really find and advocate for the best candidate we could for that position. And there were other very qualified candidates who were not women, who are men, but we felt and others felt that this was really the best candidate, the most qualified, the one who could best lead our community. And that led to some discussion and some introspection and also some, you know, thinking of ways to bring people around because we really did want everyone to be happy with the decision. Ultimately, not everyone can be happy with a decision, but what you, all you can really do when you're faced with a situation where you've got to bring people together is to listen and to listen to the concerns others have, the disagreements, and then try to respond to them. You know, let them know that they're being heard, even if the result isn't what they want.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. So now, we're moving on to the two-person questions. I'll ask a series of questions aimed at a specific pair of candidates who I will name before stating the question. The following question is directed to Ms. Singer and Mr. Dugan, and Ms. Singer will answer first. This is the question: Imagine the following scenario. The district has had an unexpected windfall of $5 million, and you must decide how to allocate that money. How would you approach this situation? Ms. Singer?
So, of course, the way I would approach it would be to invite community input, invite input from our faculty, invite input from a wide range of stakeholders. But I think where I would argue we should think about putting that money is in two places. One is, even though we have increased our resources this year for mental health and wellness, I think there's always more that we can do to be proactive towards making sure that our students are being served and that any students who have experienced academic difficulties this year, who may have slipped through the cracks or who weren't identified as having special needs, receive timely evaluations, supports, and services by bringing on consultants or extra psychologists through a contract basis. And then I think the second thing that we would need to focus on is we are going to want to go out with a bond. Probably around 2026, we'll get started working on it in 2023. Because of the unanticipated COVID expenses this year, we had to dig into our unassigned fund balance. Before we can go out to the market with a bond, we really need to get that back in order. We want to make sure that we have the top ratings from the credit agencies so that we're able to access the market at the best interest rates. So I would look to put some of that money towards getting us closer to the 4% cap. That is really where the assigned fund balance should be. Right now, we're below 3%, and we need to really pay ourselves back from the money that we borrowed to cover the COVID-related expenses.
Thank you, Ms. Singer. Mr. Dugan?
So I'm just going to take the question as presented. It's a...
It's a five million dollar windfall. Look, I, I think the most important thing you can do with money that you're not expecting is invest it. And of course, you need to do it with the input of the community. I, I, I'm a firm believer that the district and the board should not move forward in events of this kind of magnitude without input from the community, without obviously full participation and transparency with the community. But at the end of the day, it's an investment in program, it's an investment in children. Everything I think the school district should do, ultimately. Of course, there are constituencies, but everything that they can reasonably do should be done for the benefit of investment in our children. They are the reason why we moved here, they are the reason why we want to be stewards. They are the reason why we want to maintain excellence in our school system. So what do we invest in in terms of program? What do we invest in in terms of resources to foster educational excellence for our children? That is the question, and I think it would be a variety of things. You know, I'm a firm believer in foreign languages at an early age. I'm a firm believer in science and math for all student, for all children, especially focusing on, you know, the young, young children. And I think that everything that can be done to further and strengthen those programs needs to be done. And if we had a windfall like this, putting aside long-term goals and things like managing bonds and things like that, which I admit I don't have the nitty-gritty on. But if, but putting aside those things, we want to make ourselves the strongest educational program we can be for our children in the future. And that is where I would put as much as I can of that five million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Now we're going on to question number four. And this question is directed to Ms. Resnick Alt and Mr. Israel. And Ms. Resnick Alt will answer first. What are the highest priority capital projects over the next three years? And how would you propose funding them?
That's a great question. Let's start number one with the auditorium. Our schools are very well-known for their programming in terms of music and fine arts. But in theater, we've lagged. And one of the reasons for that is the auditorium. We now have a separate dedicated orchestra space at the high school. Let's use our new auditorium and make sure it's fully funded. Then let's move on to the other problem areas. Let's look at the priorities that are outlined by the board in the seven pillars and in the, the strategic plan for the district. And let's look at the places where we need the most investment. Let's make sure that our classrooms, particularly our science classrooms, have the resources they need. Let's make sure that any school that needs an upgrading to be in line with the top sustainability standards has that. And I think it's really important for the board to go through and make very clear capital investments of those sorts. But I don't want to lose focus on the fact that the first round of investments, as Allison and Jim mentioned, need to be making up for deficits from the past year. Those are our first priorities before we get to major capital projects. Academic and psychological deficits need to be made up for.
Thank you, Ms. Resnick Alt. Mr. Israel?
My high school auditorium is one of the big capital projects. I know we're going forward with it this summer. Work's going to begin this summer. I know there were issues in the past with water, with seating, with lights, it's sound equipment, and around 200 mil, around 2 million is budgeted, much of it from the reserve. I know there have also been mentions of additions to schools like learning commons, things like HVAC, HVAC upgrades, cooling solutions, HEPA units, LED lighting, fixing up masonry, things like that. I don't know the status on all these projects where everything is, to be honest. I do know also from my, from my research, when I was learning about the architecture of all the schools to try and fit the kids in. At that point, I had heard that the Heathco Gym had a ventilation issue. I don't know if that's been fixed or what the status on that was. It was just something I'd heard. But for these projects, I would not look to raise the tax levy for any huge projects. A good example of something that was done recently of not being saddled with costs, the tennis court comfort station at the middle school, which Bob Harrison spearheaded. I know donations and the village were sharing the costs, which was a great method of getting through some of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Israel. Now, this next question is for Mr. Dugan and Mr. Israel, and we'll begin with Mr. Dugan will answer first. And this is the question. Please comment about board communication and dialogue with, board communication to and dialogue with the community. What methods would you implement to make sure that you hear from and engage with the wide swath of the community? How will you ensure that a diverse array of voices are included in the process? Mr. Dugan?
Okay, so here's an issue where I think we've not done super great as, as a community, as a, as a board, as a, as a district. I, I know there is a speak with one voice policy. I've heard, it's been told to me that there's a speak with one voice policy. I really would love to examine that policy and debate it and reconsider it. I personally don't think there's a speak with one voice policy. I know that New York State says the board can only act as one. Act, we're not talking about acting, we're talking about speaking. And let's take speaking back. Let's talk about listening. Can the board listen with more than one ear? Put, put aside whether it could speak with more than one voice. Can it listen with more than one ear? I think it can. I think it should. I think we should be out there as board members, listening to the community, not telling them to fair all their questions to some other person or, you know, wait between hours of, you know, certain hours and certain days, and then maybe we'll take the third email that comes in every other email. No, listen to the community. We can all listen. We're all good at that. We're all professionals, we're all educated, we're all quite good at listening, and we should. So I would think the main thing I'd like to do, and I can't do it myself. All I can do is be somebody who advocates for, for adopting new policies in the face of what we know have failed us. And I think this notion of we have to sort of act as one, you know, impassive face has failed us. We need to do something different. And so I would like to be key in instrumenting and doing something different if I'm elected to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Mr. Israel?
So there's no magical secret that we've missed about community engagement. We have a lot of methods of input. I know in the last few weeks, we've been asking to, or, you know, there've been talk about or ask in adding some other ones, can you say? Like parent coffees and stuff like that. That's not the issue. The, the issue is the board does not listen to, respond to, or address the concerns from the community engagement. We get, there are emails replies to every email, but they're often form letters, they're vague non-answers. Public comment questions are asked, but then the time after public comment, they're not addressed. Some questions are, a lot aren't. And that is the only time for people to speak to the board and administration publicly all at once. There was a vote this past fall to curtail public comment. Allison put forward the motion and wanted even more stringent reductions than were agreed to by the rest of the board. And many people were left to wait until midnight. A medical advisory committee, which Jim mentioned, which I helped with from the get-go, was not taken into account, they didn't want to do it. And officer, medical officer positions were, were taken out of the bylaws during a pandemic. It's not an issue of gathering the input, but addressing it. Public comment needs to be fully reinstated to back, back to what it was. All questions need a detailed response in the time after public comment or by email. Explicit answers. These are the only opportunities we have to reach out. I know there are other opportunities, but these are the main ones. And people want to get their answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Israel. The next question is for Ms. Singer and Ms. Resnick Alt. Ms. Singer will answer first. The board recently enacted the equity, inclusivity, and diversity in education policy. How would you make sure that this policy has a meaningful impact on the district's work?
So the goal of the new policy is to, to build and to protect an educational ecosystem where all students and all of our faculty members feel welcomed and accepted, and where all of our students feel a sense of belonging and can experience academic success. So this policy is about broadening and diversifying views. It's not about censoring any points of views. At its, at its core, I think the policy expresses the board's consensus view that we cannot tolerate hate or bigotry or harassment or bullying or marginalization of anyone for any reason of any background. So our schools are a place for us to celebrate multiculturalism and to recognize that our differences are our strengths. So, you know, I've heard some feedback about this policy having a stifling effect, and it concerns me when I read stories in the news about how some more extreme versions of these policies that have been implemented in other schools have resulted in students being afraid to speak out in class. You know, that's the last thing we want. Student voice and student empowerment are a key pillar in our strategic plan. But I'm, I'm confident that our very highly skilled faculty can lead the challenging conversations in a great appropriate way, making sure that all the voices are heard. So I, I think that the policy that we pass is not in any way looking to, to undo history, but rather it's to include more topics and more voices and to foster a community of respect.
Thank you very much, Ms. Singer. Ms. Resnick Alt?
So I covered a little bit of this already. But I think that the new DEI policy gives us a unique opportunity to get it right. I have been addressed by several community members who see this as a real opportunity to broaden our curriculum without throwing away classics or other important subjects. I believe that I have the experience that we need to get it right. Not just at a curricular level, but also at a hiring level. I'm happy to give oversight to the board, to the oversight to the administration in skills that I used to seek reporters for my own team outside of traditional journalism schools. It wasn't surprising that we found great candidates in overlooked places. It was a necessary exercise. If you want a diverse pool of candidates, you need to actively search for it. It is upsetting to me that at Edgewood, a school that is almost 50% Asian in my daughter's grade, we have not a single Asian classroom teacher. That is alarming. We need to do better. DEI discussions need to happen at every level of our schools, just as they are happening at every level of our society. The part of the DEI problem we have nationwide is something we can start to chip away at in the school system. It's about the books we read, the extracurriculars we offer, the curriculum we implement, and how we implement these curricula.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, the next question is for Mr. Israel and Ms. Resnick Alt. Mr. Israel will begin. Imagine the following scenario. For several months, a large group of parents in the community have been petitioning the district to allow all middle school and high school students to leave campus for lunch. The district is not receptive to the idea. What is the board's role in the situation?
So like, like a lot of other things mentioned tonight, this again plays to communication. It's important that the students and parents' voices are heard on this issue. We have to make sure we give them a voice to that, give voice to their concerns and answer their questions. Decision and reasoning and everything that goes through this process needs to be public. Obviously, in this scenario, safety, there's safety as a main concern, and I'm sure other concerns. But safety is the big one because when you have an open campus, will we know where the kids are? Will there be an accounting of the kids if there's an emergency? The administration, we need to weigh in on safety and, and other concerns to inform their decision. And we should reach out to all stakeholders for their opinions and concerns. But again, the main thing is that the parent's request is legitimately and openly discussed with all the trade-offs. So they understand the reasoning in the, in the final decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Resnick Alt?
I think it's important that while the board represents parents, we do listen to the experts, the safety experts, the educators, the people who are with our children every day. And I think it's very important that we bring this concern, if it is raised at a board level, this question of an open campus or a more open campus, to, to full discussion. However, I think there also needs to be a distinction made between what the community wants, what is in the best interest of education, and perhaps if there's sort of a niche issue that a vocal minority is asking for. And I think we need to be able to have the smarts and the reasoning to differentiate between those two issues. If we bring this issue to the board, I would want to make sure that we had all of the relevant facts. I'd want to make sure that the right questions had been asked, that we had determined how many students this would impact and how it would make students feel if they were, for example, not at the financial benchmark, we're going out to lunch frequently, was going to be feasible for them. I don't want anything that is going to make any of our students feel less than. That said, yes, parents want to join an ad hoc committee on this or on any other issue, particularly on really important issues like diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would welcome those inputs as well.
Thank you very much. The next question is for Mr. Dugan and Ms. Singer. Mr. Dugan will answer first. What is the best way to address differences of opinion amongst board members and between the board and the school administration?
Thank you. The best way to address differences of opinion, I found in 26 years of being a litigator and, you know, 15 years of being a volunteer member on boards, is to listen to what people are saying. It doesn't sound that hard. It's really, really hard. I've seen time and time again, people say they're listening. People make motions that seem like it's, there's listening going on, but there isn't really understanding happening. And then when I say listen, what I really mean is not just listen, because everyone listens, understand what the person is saying to you. And then you could try to understand why that person is saying that thing. And then you can understand why the other person is saying something different. And you can try to bring the parties together. It takes more than one iteration often. It often takes several iterations to do something like this. It's harder than it really should be, but in fact, it's just something that happens every day and every board I've ever participated in. This has happened. And the one where the resolutions have been successful have been those in which there is a culture of listening. Not just one person who says, I want to listen to somebody. Everybody is inculcated with the idea that it's important to listen. I think that's an issue we have right now, frankly, here in the district. I don't know that there's a culture of listening. A lot of people had the impression there wasn't in this most recent pandemic and all the issues that came from it. There was a culture of, you know, let's support each other here at the leadership position. Because, you know, it's tough being a leader. Let's support each other, but what about listening to the people you're supposed to be leading? You've got to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Ms. Singer?
You know, I think one of the challenges is that when we listen to the community, which we do listen to the community, doesn't always speak with one voice. There's often tremendous diversity of opinion coming from the community. And it's the board's responsibility to listen to all of those voices and then to make decisions where we take those strong emotions off the table and, and look at the facts and the data. But specifically to the question that you asked, I think the way to build consensus at the board table is to do the hard work of building trust and showing respect to each other. And I have tried to do that with my fellow board members and with people I work with in my, in my professional life. It takes time to do this. You have to really try to put time in to understand what people value. But that paves the way for successful collaboration and for trust-based problem solvings. And I think over the last three years, I have developed strong relationships with our faculty, with our administration, and that enables me to work with groups towards building compromise solutions. Now, being confrontational does not grow relationships. Confrontation may make for good theater at the board table, but it doesn't really lead to the best outcomes. With my remaining time, I just want to address the point I already made about public comment. You know, this year, the board did put in the three-minute rule for public comment. That was not an effort to stifle people. It was an effort to ensure that we could hear from as many different people during the course of the night as we could. We wanted to hear from multiple voices, and that's why we. That finds out, I'll try to get to another question.
So the next question is, the next pair to answer a question is Mr. Israel and Ms. Singer. And Mr. Israel will answer first. Please comment on the board's advocacy efforts with state and federal elected officials. Are there any specific matters on which the board needs to increase its advocacy efforts? Mr. Israel?
Thank you. I know the board lobbied this, this year about what they said was confusing COVID regulations. I can tell you, from my experience with. I can tell you, um, from my experience with, with it, the regulations were not confusing. In fact, they weren't even updated until a few weeks ago. I spent hundreds of hours this year volunteering to get the most current information from local and national networks and dispersing it through them. I was a part of a large, a large number of groups locally and nationally. I dealt with legislators. I spoke with them, health officials, the New York Education Department, superintendents, faculties, parents. The board even asked me for information at times when I had the most updated information. I spoke at meetings and created presentations to get this out. I, that's the thing I don't understand about what the board lobbied about this year. But going forward, I believe that the board should increase their advocacy on mental health issues. I'm very worried, as I mentioned earlier, about the effects of this past year socially and emotionally on our children. I know I witnessed it at home. And I'm worried about the support that we'll have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Israel. Ms. Singer?
So with regard to what the board lobbied about regarding the guidance, we had conversations with state health officials, with the CDC about trying to bring the guidance that we are required to follow in line with what the science was saying about the transmission rates among younger students. Our participation in those conversations gave us access to information that enabled us to move more quickly. We knew that the three-foot guidance was coming, and our participation in that advocacy work enabled us to get, to get ready for that. The other areas where I think the board needs to focus on advocacy, particularly with fully funding the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Right now, the federal government mandates specific types of spending for special education students. They are required, uh, they are supposed to be, we are supposed to be paid back for that, those expenses by the federal government, but that has never happened. We're now working with the Biden administration to try to secure full funding for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. That is a, a big hit to our budget and to every, every school's budget in this state. We lobbied successfully this year for our teachers to be moved into a higher phase for vaccines. That we worked with other local boards and with the state school boards association to accomplish that. Majority of our teachers are now fully vaccinated, and that work enabled us to open schools more quickly and move to fully open schools in March and in April.
Thank you, Ms. Singer. Oh, sorry. Stop. Okay. The next question is for Ms. Resnick Alt and Mr. Dugan. Ms. Resnick Alt will go first. Please comment on the school district's collaboration with village government. Is there any aspect of that collaboration that needs to be improved? Are there any specific matters on which there should be more or less collaboration? Ms. Resnick Alt?
Yes, there, yes, there are definitely opportunities to collaborate more between the village and the school district. The first place, um, that we saw a sort of fissure happen in the community because of a failure of the school district and the, um, village government to be on the same page was the freightway development. There were very heated emotions. There was a lot of talk about what a freightway development could mean for our schools. And I think it would have been very helpful early on in that conversation if there had been a listening session, a joint session with the village and the school leadership to discuss what the impact of a proposed development like Freightway might be on Scarsdale. Again, there are other similar topics of collaboration room to discuss what, uh, the influx of more, uh, new families to the village, uh, in light of the exodus from New York recently will mean for our schools in the long term. And a chance to, to basically collaborate on major capital projects, how everything is integrated, our sports facilities, our fields, our recreational facilities. And without taking that collaborative approach, um, I think there are likely to continue to be fissures within the community.
Thank you, Ms. Resnick Alt. Mr. Dugan?
Well, I mean, I have Scarsdale resident for 15 years. To me, it's often seems like the, the town government and the school district leadership are sort of ships that sort of pass in the night, or maybe they run parallel, pass rarely crossing. What do I, what do I mean by that? Well, um, Jessica hit on it, I think, really well with the Freightway example. Long-term development. We are in extraordinary period of Scarsdale's history right now, where the demand is extremely high. The building is going crazy. Everything, time you turn around, something is being torn down and built in its place. There is population growth, perhaps it looks like, that may occur for the first time in a while here in Scarsdale. And there's certainly, the Freightway has developed a lot of population growth that may occur in Scarsdale in a short period of time. What kind of, um, you know, cooperation is going on between the village in terms of long-term development? Then educational needs of people, because that was a big concern with Freightway. We were not prepared for the influx of residents that would come very quickly. From an educational perspective, if Freightway is developed, I personally think Freightway should be developed, although it's not in any of my business. I'm just a private citizen. But if it is, it needs to be done with a long-term view of how the educational, um, needs of this community and of those people who move there will be met and, and not be eroded by the increase in population in a short period of time. I never heard anything about how that was being addressed that gave me any type of satisfaction that it was being thought through adequately. And that would be, that would be something I would point to as a place where cooperation certainly is needed.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Okay, the remaining two questions will be directed to all four candidates. What is the school board's role in fostering relational trust in education? For example, trust between teachers and administrators, parents and teachers, parents and administrators, students and teachers, and what would your approach be? Ms. Singer?
Now, I, I spoke earlier about tremendous importance of trust among all of the stakeholders in order to move forward. But the role of board members specifically with regard to trust, you know, as board members, we are elected to make decisions that maximize the educational opportunities for all of our students. We are elected to be stewards of the district, and we are elected to be thought leaders when it comes to policy. The board has to provide oversight, input, and guidance with regard to every, every aspect of issues that come before the board. We set policy and we charge the superintendent with carrying them out. Those are the regulatory and the statutory responsibilities of the board. The board does not have managerial responsibilities. And I think, um, you know, the, the administration has to run the day-to-day operations because they are the educational experts. And we have to trust in their educational expertise. I know that there were times last year when some members of the community felt that the board should take over day-to-day management. But, you know, we can't do that because we're not qualified as educational experts. We can't do that any more than we would, you know, go and teach physics. So, you know, there's also a long-held value in our school district that decisions are made at the building level and that we trust our administrators and our teachers who are on the front lines, who have an understanding of the educational pedagogy, and we work from a building up approach and never a top-down approach.
Thank you very much. Ms. Resnick Alt?
I'm glad that, um, Allison brought up the reality that we work from a building up approach. I think that's important. I think that's a good way to educate students. However, there are some statutory responsibilities that sit with the board in terms of oversight. One of the most important roles is the role of reviewing the superintendent's performance. And I think that in terms of communication, one of the differences between districts that had a great reaction to a terrible situation during the past year and ones that didn't, like ours, lay in communication. And I think that the, that to rebuild trust, the board does have the ability to give feedback. But communication needs to change. There must be more transparency and better communication. And I believe that that kind of communication, a two-way communication, communication that explains not only the what, but also the why, will get us far in getting out of this crisis and in rebuilding trust, trust between the teachers and the board, the parents, the administration, and even the students. I think it does trickle up. I think it should also, in this case, trickle down because disenfranchised, angry parents who feel that they haven't been heard cannot take a building up approach.
Thank you. Mr. Dugan?
Thank you. Um, so I think the board has an important role in building relational trust among the different constituencies in the district. Uh, the board does have responsibility for governance, oversight, and policymaking. All of those play into a trust-building role that the board can exercise and should exercise. Jessica mentioned the review of the superintendent's performance and transparency. I think that builds into a trust-building role that the board can and should exercise. I mean, it is, I think, the board's job as the elected representatives and also the elected voice in some ways of our community, of our parents, uh, of our students to, uh, ensure that people are being heard. Again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, that there's listening happening and understanding happening. I do think that builds relational trust. I, I think there is no trust where some people feel disenfranchised. I think there is no trust where some people feel that their concerns are not being paid attention to or that, you know, there's a certain degree to which people view that there's a lack of accountability, a lack of, um, people really feeling like they have to explain anything that they do to the community. And I feel, I think that that disenfranchises us, causes us to lose trust, causes us to lose faith, causes people to move away, causes people to leave the school. We don't want any of that. We want to change all of that. Um, I understand that we trust and, and respect our educators, that it's their job to be educators. But we are all educated, professional, intelligent, high-achieving people. We can and we should do better to listen to our community.
Thank you. Mr. Israel?
I'm going to be along the lines of Jessica and Jim. Thank you for those comments. Uh, there was a lot of mistrust this year. Um, it needs to be rebuilt by changing culture and attitude. As everyone said, we need more communication and transparency, the input of groups, of all groups. We need to know the trade-offs, the decisions. We need the board to explicitly respond to every concern and, and our questions. We're, we're going to the meetings for a reason. We're taking the time out of our day to ask the questions. We want to hear the answer. Emails, sure, they're all answered, but the, the vague non-answers and the form letters are not helpful to us. I mentioned earlier the curtailing of public comment, which I can't imagine that limiting public comment allowed more speakers. It was only at one meeting, it was put into effect immediately, and 21 people were made to wait until around midnight to speak. And that was the only time it's come into play. That needs to be changed tomorrow. Um, the medical advisory committee was mentioned. But I want you to ask, what has each, have each of these candidates done personally to increase transparency and trust in our district? I spoke up when concerns were not addressed. I sought to find answers and relay that information to the community who are asking for answers to those questions. That's what I would do on the board, get the answers. Um, I'm, it was mentioned earlier, there's a cliche lack of transparency, the 67-page document that the administration had that proved that all children, elementary children could fit full-time, six feet, all safety in our school. And it was not released to anyone, not the board restart or the community. That was a lack of transparency, and the board should have spoken up more than just Ron saying something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, this is our final question. And this is the question. Identify two pandemic-driven school board or district practices or initiatives that you believe should be continued after the pandemic has ended. And we're going to begin with Ms. Resnick Alt, please.
Okay, so I think the first one that I'm going to go for, it's hard for me to find things that were driven by the school board specifically. The, the two programs that stand out in my mind are, first of all, the Friends of Music and Arts Practice Partners Program. And the second, um, was a buddy program. Those were both one-to-one mentoring programs. One was in music, the other was in general social, uh, development. And I think that those programs should continue. In terms of board-driven initiatives, it's harder to say. I think that one thing that we absolutely should continue is the level of engagement. People have been coming forward to board meetings. I hope that, um, the coffees that were offered very recently and perhaps a little late in the game will, uh, be a gateway to more events, to better processes, to, that those will be continued, that they will be started and continued and allow people to have a seat at the table. I also hope that, um, some of the training for teachers in better remote, in better remote pedagogies will be continued. We are fundamentally an educational institution, and we should be encouraging our leaders to, to seek great remote and in-person educational options.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Dugan?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I don't think I have an answer on what the school board, uh, did that should be continued. What I, what I do think should happen, I saw it with my own children, I thought was great, and Jessica mentioned it. Friends of Music in the Arts, that partnership, um, older children with younger children. We had a, our, our fourth grader who's learning a flute, who benefited from that, uh, participated in that enthusiastically. And actually, it helped her, uh, to participate in that, and that was a great, um, innovation, um, that I think should be continued. I don't think there's a reason not to continue it. I would suggest it be expanded. How about a Friends of Science and Math? How about a Friends of Foreign Language? Um, there, there's really not a reason just to limit it to music and art. I, I think it would be, it's great to have older children in this, in the high school, because, you know, a lot of us don't have siblings in the high school. Older children in the high school partnering with our younger children to the extent that they are willing and able to do so is a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I think, I do hope that continues. Um, another thing that I know happened a lot in the pandemic, I don't think it was a board initiative, learning outside, going outside, being outside as much as possible. It's nice, I think, when the weather is nice to learn outside. Um, it's something I did when I was in, uh, school when I was a kid. Um, and I just think it's, it'd be great to see, to see that continue. I don't think it's a board initiative, but, but I, I do think it's, it's a wonderful thing to see more of. So that would be, that would be the two things I would mention.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
I actually identified the necessity of, of moving forward with what we call these pandemic positive learnings. Uh, when we talked about what are the top three priorities for the board? I spoke about our need to find a way to integrate small group learning. I talked about, uh, we need to use these creative, integrate these more creative uses of technology. I talked about what we learned from live streaming. I think there are a lot of other things that, you know, that the board learned. Hopefully, we'll never face a situation like this again, but, you know, if we do, there are certainly things with, that we would, as a board, want to do differently. Uh, one is we would want to do a better job of communicating to our residents about what the board can and cannot do. Uh, so I think there was a lot of misunderstanding there. You know, another thing I think we would do differently would be to increase our communications with the community. We need to find more opportunities for bidirectional communications. And we also have to change our social media policy. You know, there were several times over the past year when we did utilize Facebook, mostly to correct errors of fact, but I think it's time for the board to revisit. It's no social media policy. Ms. was very much opposed to boards using social media, but part of our society, and it's how people want to receive information.
Thank you very much. Mr. Israel?
Thank you. Um, okay, two policies that I'd like to keep. I really enjoyed the, uh, the extra hygiene and hand-watching and constant reminding of it. I think it was part of the reason we've had less flu, less sickness, um, these past few years. The, the cleaning, obviously, to the amount we're doing it can't be kept up, but to keep, but to have some of that cleaning and, and keep reminding people to, to the hygiene and hand-washing. And additionally, like others have mentioned, the small group learning where possible is just a great addition. It really helps to be in smaller classes. It's one of the reasons my daughter moved from, um, Butler into Chice. Um, she's really been enjoying the small classes and other, other houses should be able to get that and in the other schools as well. Um, with the time I've left, I just want to address Allison's response, um, about the guidance. My question is, if the board knew that the three-feet guidance was coming without barriers and that was in line with the science and the Department of Health, then why did we spend money on barriers and put them in? Thank you.
Yes, that's the guidance.
There's, you know what? Please, there's, thank you. Uh, now we have concluded the questions, and the candidates will each have one and a half minutes for closing statement in reverse order of the opening. We'll begin with Ms. Singer.
So I want to again express my sincere thanks to the League of Women Voters, to my fellow candidates, and whoever, and to everyone who took the time to watch tonight. Your commitment to this process is a testament to how passionately we all. Your commitment to this process is a testament to how passionately we all feel about our schools. And I hope this enthusiasm translates into a high voter turnout on May 18th. When you're making your final decisions about whom to vote for, I hope you'll keep the following things in mind. Order of education work is eclectic, complex and broad in scope. Board members must come to this work with an open mind rather than with a specific agenda. The ability to collaborate and work effectively with a broad group of stakeholders, including school personnel, is how we make productive progress. Selecting an effective board member is not like voting for a politician where you strive to identify the individual who best reflects your personal views and who will work to enact the policies that you favor. Instead, board members are trustees with advisory and fiduciary rather than managerial responsibilities. Trust is the root of that word. Board members need to be trusted to carefully and objectively weigh all opinions and facts and then advise the administration on how to move forward in the best interest of our students. Whichever candidate you select, I urge you to evaluate their intent and temperament, their professional and volunteer experience and their ability and readiness to serve in this incredibly important role. It's been an honor for me to serve on this board and I hope to have the privilege of continuing to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singer. Mr. Israel.
I'm holding an event where you can meet me and ask questions this Wednesday on my driveway at 64 Stratton Road, both from 10:00 AM to noon and 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM, a rain date Thursday. Um, we'll have the Bona Bona Ice Cream Truck in the evening, so feel free to bring children. That's Wednesday, 64 Stratton Road, 10 to noon, 10 to noon in the morning, um, and 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Please reach out to me if you'd like me to speak anywhere else or ask me questions. My campaign Facebook is facebook.com/iron4boa. That's facebook.com/iron, the number four, boa. I have the passion and as a stay-at-home dad, I have the time to channel everything I have into representing our community. I've demonstrated the ability to research and fully evaluate the basis for decisions that affect our children as well as to have an open mind and collaborate in my career and life. It's not easy to speak up, but I have. I just don't have faith in candidates who haven't spoken up this entire year that they'll suddenly speak up in the spotlight facing the administration in the community. We need a voice. We need more responsive board members. And in terms of, and as far as uh, Board Vice President Allison, did she truly do everything possible for our vulnerable children this year? What did she do to improve communication and transparency? On May 18th, you may vote for any two candidates and it's important that, to evaluate the actions and, actions and performance rather than only experience and projection. There are a lot of intelligent in, people in this community who can do this job. I urge you to vote for who you believe will best serve your children, your community and your school district. We need change. Thank you for listening tonight and to the League of Women Voters for hosting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dugan.
I want to say again, thank you to everyone for listening, uh, for the League of Women Voters for sponsoring, holding this event. For my fellow candidates for appearing and answering the questions, um, and participating in this dialogue. Um, so I really think that I do bring, and I think I can say the same for my SBNC candidate, Jessica Resnick Alt. We do bring something others don't. We've been vetted and specifically chosen by the SBNC to be candidates for the board this year. They've done some due diligence, they've done a lot of due diligence. They've looked into our bona fides, they've asked a lot of questions. Uh, they chose us. They thought we were the right people for the job. I am honored that they did. I come with dedication, I come with passion. Um, I've spent my entire life asking questions and speaking up. I speak up for a living. I do it all the time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I, I'm good at speaking up when I want to, when I feel like it's important, when it's, when it is necessary to do so. I have a lot of experience doing that. I want to bring my experience, I want to bring my passion, I want to bring my expertise, I want to bring my listening ability, I want to bring my analytical ability. I want to bring my ability to solve and get things done to the board. I want to make the Scarsdale, help make Scarsdale school system the best school system it can be now and into the future. I'm prepared to do that. I am honored to do that. I really hope I am lucky enough to be chosen by my community to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Ms. Resnick Alt.
So if Jim uh, analyzes and speaks for a living, I ask questions. That's my job. I'm a journalist. I am honored to have been chosen uh, by the SBNC to have been vetted, to have had my references checked and uh, to be here running. I am honored that about 150 of you have chosen to tune in tonight to listen to us. And I think it shows how much we care about the future of Scarsdale schools. Personally, I am concerned about our return in the fall. I have seen firsthand the impact grief has on children and on their learning processes. Um, many of our kids will be returning to school, having lost loved ones, having been to Zoom funerals, having watched their best friends lose grandparents where there could be no funeral. Um, we need to be prepared for what awaits us in the fall. And we need to have board members who are willing to come to the table to have meetings this summer if needed, to set a calendar that reflects the community and will serve our children. I have no question that my bona fides and Jim's bona fides complement one another and will bring a tremendous amount of listening to the town. Now, I take issue with Iron's idea that he's the only one of us who has spoken up. We have all been at the table.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. It's been a great, uh, great forum. And thank you to the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale for their excellent organization and good luck to all of you.
Thank you to everyone who participated. Good luck to all the candidates and to everyone watching. Don't forget to vote on May 18th at Scarsdale Congregational Church, 1 Heathcote Road. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. If you have any questions about registration or absentee ballot information, you can go to the district website or to lwvs.org. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sheila. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone. Good luck.
Good luck. Take care. Bye-bye.